Dan, are you good? Good to go. Okay, we'll reconvene our meeting and we'll have the Pledge of Allegiance. Rick, do you want to lead us, please? Okay, well, welcome, everybody. I see Mr. Sullivan out there. Well, we have a special presentation for Mr. Sullivan tonight, who's Executive Director of the Memorial Tournament. Would you like to come forward and address counsel?
Thank you, Mayor Keenan. Counsel, thank you for having me here tonight. Trying to accomplish two things. Heather Baxter, who I think you all know, our Director of Community Relations and Advertising, is joining me tonight. And I wanted to check off on the Memorial. We're a week away, so talk a little bit about that. And then also, maybe bring to final combination on the President's Cup with a little presentation for counsel. On the Memorial Tournament, as I said, a week away, we're in great shape. From a physical golf course perspective, we've done well in the marketplace. From a sales perspective, we expect to have equal, if not better, crowds than we've had over the years. Our field is looking very good, even without Tiger Woods. We're going to compete at the highest level. And as we have, over the years, deliver a product for Dublin and the surrounding area that will be broadcast across the country and across the world. Some of the numbers match up with what we did at the President's Cup, but it'll be distributed over 225 countries and territories, 800 million households. We're very proud of how we position the region and the city within the broadcasting. We look forward to being able to deliver that again. I want to say thank you to counsel for supporting us along the way with a couple of our community events. Our Legends Luncheon was able to distribute over $800,000 to Nationwide Children's Hospital in just a simple luncheon. We feel very proud about that. And last Friday night, we had a benefit concert, which was extremely enjoyable and will do its own part in raising anywhere close to $75,000 or $100,000 to Nationwide Children's when it's all said and done. So between the two events, we appreciate all the support that counsel provides and we're proud to support Nationwide Children's Hospital. So we look forward to hosting you next week, being a part of the event. We appreciate all the civic support, all the service support throughout the week. And we know we'll deliver a product that you all will be proud of. And then when it comes to the President's Cup, we commissioned a painter during President's Cup Week. Her name was Sarah D'Angelo-Hot, and she's a Columbus artist. And so she spent the week putting on canvas what the week was all about. Well, she spent the week coming up with ideas and then spent months putting the paintings together. And the ultimate finished product was these four depictions of the week, starting with the opening ceremony to a little bit of the competition, some of our community and community events that we put on, and then ultimately, the winning team with the United States. We're offering this to counsel as a gift. So thank you and appreciation. Hopefully, you'll hang it proudly somewhere in City Hall here. And once again, we thank you for everything that you've done with us over the years and look forward to many years to go.
Very nice. Thank you, Dan, and thank you, Heather.
You're welcome.
And I think I can speak on behalf of counsel, our condolences in the loss of your partner and associate, John Hines.
Thank you very much.
Everybody that knew him knew he was a good man.
Tremendous man. Yeah, thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
All right, you're welcome.
Looking forward to the next week or two here.
You got it. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Heather. Okay, that brings us to citizen comments. Mr. Mauer.
Your Honor, and members of Dublin Governance, I have two items tonight. First item will be something of a shock to you because I've, as a result of some reflections, I've decided I have a lot of good things to say about you. Number one, I'll go to the management first. Can't go to all the members of management, but I will single out the city manager. And I remember around the time of the State of the City address, I had my computer on, and you were giving an address, I believe, to the entire city management for a reason I don't know. I think there were new people there and other people. And it struck me that you are the Google Wikipedia of Dublin. You got it all.
A new title.
Yeah. And I guess I can single out the lawyer there. Whenever he detects the slightest bit of ignorance on my part, he leaps.
Tall buildings.
Okay. Second, well, a little bit more on this first item. I'm going to, you know, we've been together for quite a few years now. I'm going to acknowledge an area of your life that you probably aren't expecting to hear about, and it's this. For some general remarks, I've never, during the years I've been up here, which seems like a century and a half, found you ever slacking off at anything. Maybe you were so good at it, you covered it. But I go through this agenda, and nobody had ever slacked off on any of it. There's one thing I want to say, though, aside from all that, and that is, I don't know what you get paid for this job, but I know from the last time I knew the figures, it is not very much relative per hour to what you do on your regular work. But you really turn it out, you really produce all the time. And the amount of work you do is just immense. It's not just this meeting here, it's all the committees you're on and all the research you do, which pays off. I appreciate that from you, and I know that you do it as hard as you do anything else, even though it's not your major profession or your major job. So there. Now you're in a good state of shock. I'll get to my second point. The hottest item, I thought, in going through this material this afternoon, the hottest item, I thought, was an item called Community Services Commission, April 8, 2014, report minutes, rather. That report is full of hunger and thirst, thirsting for tremendous things to happen in the city, exciting things, exciting creative things. I mean, aside from the shaping of the city, but you sense that the place is full of talent and there's no place or no place yet. You do mention two places, which do exist, really. You say there's no center for, it suggests there's no center for display of arts, but there are. There are two, the Dublin Art Council place, and there's the Abbey Theater. There, they exist. You need to figure out how to fill them. I've got some ideas, which I think I can release only maybe in a letter to the editor, but I can get away from the stuff that's gotten me grounded. I might just do that. But nice going. Congratulations. Nice working with you, even when we don't agree.
Thank you, Mr. Mauer. We appreciate those gracious and very kind words. This will bring us to the consent agenda portion. Is there any council member that would like to have any item removed? Hearing none. Ma'am?
Mr. Lecliter?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Ms. Saleh?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gerber?
Yes.
Mayor Keenan?
Yes.
Ms. Genesee Zerker?
Yes.
That brings us to second readings, ordinance 33-14.
Authorizing city manager to execute necessary conveyance documents to acquire 0.086 acre more or less permanent easement, 0.097 acre more or less temporary easement from Paul Nell Jr. for the property located 15 Grandview Drive for the construction of a multi-use path as part of the Dublin Road South Phase III project and declaring an emergency.
Marcia?
This is one more property owner that we've reached agreement with. There's a slight modification from the appraised value. The majority of that was related to the vegetation and landscaping, and we are asking for adoption this evening.
Any questions from counsel? Mr. Mauer, I see you've signed up for this.
There's a phrase, this is a matter of terminology. There's a phrase in this legislation and in past legislation, which I think I know to what it applies, but the phrase I'm looking at is multi-use path. Is this what we used to call the bike path?
Pretty much.
Yes.
Yep.
Now, when we speak of multi-use here, that means it's walking, running, bicycling. And are service and emergency vehicles allowed to go on it if they have stuff to do and they can't take up the road?
Not typically, but there are times when there are service vehicles that do use the path, but that's not their intended purpose.
Yeah. Okay, good. That's it.
Thank you. No further discussion, Anne?
Yeah, I'm sorry, we need a motion for emergency on this.
So moved.
Yes.
Second.
Ms. Genesee Zerker?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Mr. Lecliter?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gerber?
Yes.
Mayor Keenan?
Yes.
Ms. Saleh?
Yes.
Mr. Lecliter?
Yes.
Ms. Saleh?
Yes.
Mayor Keenan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gerber?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
And Ms. Genesee Zerker?
Yes.
Thank you. Ordinance 34-14.
Appropriating the 0.045 acre more or less permanent easement, 0.052 acre more or less temporary easement from Adam P. Johnson for the property located at 5851 Dublin Road for construction of a multi-use path as part of the Dublin Road South Phase III bike, Phase III project.
Marcia?
Another property for the Dublin Road South. We currently have not reached agreement with Mr. Johnson, but continue to work with him, and we're hopeful that we will reach agreement. If we don't, this allows us to continue the eminent domain process, and we're just asking for adoption this evening.
Very good. Any council questions or discussion? Anne?
Vice Mayor Gerber?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Ms. Saleh?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Lecliter?
Yes.
Mayor Lecliter? Mayor Keenan?
Yes.
Ms. Genesee Zerker?
Yes.
Ordinance 35-14.
Authorizing the city manager to accept and receive a 0.002 acre more or less permanent stormwater easement donated by Jack M. McKittrick and Sue E. McKittrick for the property located 5945 Dublin Road for the improvements of a multi-use path as part of the Dublin Road South Phase III project.
Marcia?
And this is an easement from one of the property owners on the Dublin Road South Bike Path Project where we need to make a slight improvement to some stormwater issues. And the property owner, because it does benefit their property, has dedicated or agreed to dedicate this to the city at no cost.
Any questions?
I'd just like to thank the McKittricks for donating this to the city.
Indeed. Thank you. Anne?
Mr. Lecliter?
Yes.
Mayor Keenan?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Ms. Genesee Zerker?
Yes.
Ms. Saleh?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gerber?
Ordinance 36-14.
Authorizing city manager to accept the dedication of 0.104 acre more or less for fee simple interest for multi-use path easement, 0.096 acre more or less for fee simple interest for multi-use path drainage and utilities easement, and 0.002 acre more or less for fee simple interest for sanitary sewer easement from Dublin Senior Community DVR LLC, and 0.0, 0.10 acre more or less for fee simple interest for multi-use path drainage and utilities easement, and 0.103 acre more or less for fee simple interest for sanitary sewer easement from Dublin Senior Community LSP LLC located north of Post, west of Avery-Mirfield Drive, City of Dublin, County of Franklin, State of Ohio.
Very good. I see Mr. Hammer Smith's prepared to speak to us.
Yes, and Anne did a wonderful job with that title. So, members of counsel, as the staff report indicates, these are five easements necessary for the construction of an assisted living center over at 6480 Post Road. Two of the easements are for the relocation of a sanitary sewer that was in conflict with the proposed building. There are two different parcels over there under the same ownership, but really two different corporate names necessitating separate easements. And then lastly, three easements necessary for a shared use path to be constructed along the north side of Post Road along the front edge of these two parcels. With that, I'd be glad to answer any questions you might have, but staff is recommending approval.
Very good. Counsel?
Do we have shared use path to the east and west of this little section?
There is a portion that extends along Post Road, but there are some gaps that do exist over there that we are working to fill over time.
Gotcha. Getting this while we can, huh?
Yes.
Understood.
Exactly.
Thank you. What is the timeframe, though, for the completion of the rest of it?
We're actually going to talk about, I think, in the CIP, Post Road, and what the future of Post Road might be. We are going to resurface it this summer, just given the existing pavement condition. But we do want to propose that we decide what to do with Post Road as far as whether it's curb and gutter or ditches, and then also the extension of the shared use path itself.
Thank you.
And we've had the discussion about Post Road with respect to curbs and gutters, et cetera, in the past, so we'll be hearing more about that at CIP.
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions? Anne?
Ms. Genesee Zerker?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gerber?
Yes.
Mayor Keenan?
Yes.
Ms. Saleh?
Yes.
Mr. Lecliter?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ordinance 37-14.
Amendment in Section 33.67, political activity of the Dublin Code of Ordinances to expand the scope of permissible political activity for city employees.
Mr. Wagner?
No additional information on this, unless you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer.
Very good. Counsel, have any questions? If not, Anne?
Do we have a testimony on this, I think?
Oh, that's right. Wally, I'm sorry. Mr. Mauer?
I think the quickest way for me to reduce my questions probably to zero is to quote something here and then ask a question. This is in the memo. Revision to Section 33.67, now quote, "Will allow an employee to hold a public office as long as there is no political party affiliation indicated on the ballot for the office." Now, here's my question. Can you give me an example of the kind of job that's involved here?
Well, judges would be an example?
We have had in the past, there was an employee that was a member of the Plain Cities Village Council, so they would be allowed to do that, and this would provide for that allowance. It doesn't happen very often, but it would allow.
I see what you mean. He's elected in another town, and because he's, I got it, I got it. Thank you.
Can I answer your question? Okay, now?
Ms. Saleh?
Yes.
Mayor Keenan?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Ms. Genesee Zerker?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gerber?
Yes.
Mr. Lecliter?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
And ordinance 38-14.
Authorizing provision of certain incentives to Everhart Financial Group Inc., doing business as Everhart Advisors, to induce it to retain a main office and associated operations and workforce within the city, authorizing execution of a development or real estate purchase agreement.
Mr. McDaniel?
Good evening, members of counsel. We're pleased to bring before you the proposed economic development agreement with Everhart Financial Group, Inc., also known as Everhart Advisors. As a second reading, and you may recall that this ordinance supersedes ordinance 10-14 previously passed on February 10, 2014. As Jeremiah Gross explained at your last meeting, this is an incentive proposal in the form of a land sale and a withholding performance-based incentive over a three-year period. There's been no change to the agreement since it was introduced at your last meeting. The staff recommends counsel approval of this ordinance. I'm pleased to introduce you tonight, Mr. Matt Romeo, Chief Operating Officer of Everhart Advisors. If it's okay, if he approaches, and he'd like to make a few comments, and I'm also happy to answer any questions you might have regarding the ordinance or the agreement.
Thank you. Please proceed.
Yep. Matt Romeo. I live on Hawthorne in court in Dublin, representing Everhart Advisors through this experience. We want to thank the economic development team, very critical in our continuation of business in Dublin, really came through for us at the end with an alternative site when our initial development idea turned out to not work for us based on some costs and size of building and things. So we're excited to stay in Dublin. I'm a Dublin resident, have been for a long time, as well as Scott Everhart. Our families are in Dublin. We're real excited to be participating and continuing our business here, and hopefully we'll do that for many years to come. So with that, that's really all I have, is just to thank mostly the economic development, Jenny and her team and Dana. They've really been very valuable to us through this process, so appreciate everything that Dublin's doing for us.
We're glad to have you on board, and we look forward to future growth.
Great. As we saw in the economic incentive agreement.
I see, does counsel have any questions in particular?
I have just one question, not actually directly related to this, okay? And I'm very excited, too, that I think this is actually a much better site for you. But just in general terms, on the economic development agreements, when, what happens if they don't make their performance? You know, I noticed in this one, there's really a very minimal amount of money difference between collection and what our incentive is. And so I just wonder if they didn't actually develop at the level of employees that is anticipated.
Right. Yeah, there's two aspects to this, this particular agreement. One is the land sale, which you're familiar with. We've discussed that. The other one is the three-year incentive based on withholding performance. And if they don't meet the targets, they don't get the incentive payment. It's only over a three-year period, and it's capped at $5,000 per year for three years. I'm sure if it gets to you.
But, but I mean, like, the land has already taken place.
Right.
So that value essentially just happens. I mean, that's just part of the agreement.
Yeah, the agreement also references that they'll occupy two-thirds of the space for a certain period of time, so there are other type of controls in there as well.
Okay, thank you.
Of course, we're getting the value of the new building on land that's sitting empty right now, which has great value to the community, so.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Mr. Mauer?
You might remember, this is an item I got very angry about one night here. And now, maybe this evening, I can get some figures which will relieve that anger. But I see this against the backdrop of a huge national problem. And the national problem is that there's this discrepancy between the 1% who have more money, more power than the other 99% in the country. And we're aiming, it's a very complex and very difficult and long-drawn-out matter to do anything with. Now, I'm wondering here if I could get some figures. You know, one of the, one of the functions of this corporation is to advise CEOs of corporations what to do with their, with their money that they earn. Now, I guess if I had an answer to a question to something like this, do you know what the range of annual payment to a CEO, the ones that you look at here, is from the lowest to the highest?
Well, I think not. I think that would be proprietary.
Is that professional knowledge that you would let out, or what?
Can't answer that, that's their business.
Okay. Maybe I can ask the man later.
Yeah, there you go. Good luck. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mauer. Anne?
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Mayor Keenan?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Ms. Genesee Zerker?
Yes.
Ms. Saleh?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gerber?
Yes.
Mr. Lecliter?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Ordinance 39-14.
Petitioning the Board of County Commissioners of Union County, Ohio, for a change of township lines of Jerome Township for that portion which now lies within the corporate boundaries of the City of Dublin and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Reiner?
Good evening, members of counsel. This ordinance, again, will allow us to petition Union County to change those boundaries for that portion of Tartan Ridge that's currently in Jerome Township. We had the agreement of both townships through an annexation agreement that you previously authorized, and we'd ask for adoption of this tonight so that we can expedite the petition filing.
Very good. Counsel questions? I'll move for you. Emergency. I'll second it.
Ms. Saleh?
Yes.
Mr. Lecliter?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gerber?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Mayor Keenan?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Ms. Genesee Zerker?
Yes.
And on the ordinance?
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Mr. Lecliter?
Yes.
Ms. Saleh?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gerber?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Mayor Keenan?
Yes.
And Ms. Genesee Zerker?
Yes.
And thank you for all the work on this. This was a very long, drawn-out, and complex issue that you guys handled with a lot of grace, and we finally got her done, so thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Okay. First readings, ordinance 43-14.
This is adopting and enacting a supplement to the Code of Ordinances for the City of Dublin, Ohio.
I'll introduce it. Mr. Smith?
Excuse me. This is our normal housekeeping ordinance where we update our codified ordinances based on what you've done over the last year. Thank you.
Very good. Any questions? Is there a motion to dispense with public hearing? So moved. Second.
Ms. Genesee Zerker?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Mr. Lecliter?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gerber?
Yes.
Mayor Keenan?
Yes.
Ms. Saleh?
Yes.
And on the ordinance?
Mayor Keenan?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Ms. Genesee Zerker?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Lecliter?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gerber?
Yes.
And Ms. Saleh?
Ordinance 44-14.
Authorizing the city manager to execute necessary conveyance documents to acquire 0.015 acre more or less permanent easement, 0.048 acre more or less temporary easement from Darrell L. Cramblett and Victoria L. Cramblett for the property located at 355 South High Street for construction of a multi-use path as part of the Dublin Road South Phase III project and declaring an emergency.
I'll introduce it. Thank you. Marcia?
Yeah, this legislation provides for the acquisition of the easements and right-of-way needed from this property owner for the Dublin Road South project. And this is a property owner that we had previously passed legislation authorizing us to pursue eminent domain. And since the time that that ordinance was passed, we've been able to come to an agreement with the property owner. So we are asking that we waive the public hearing or public reading for the next council meeting and passes an emergency this evening.
Very good. Any questions from council? Is there a motion to dispense with public hearing? Treats as emergency?
Some of.
Ann?
Ms. Saleh?
Yes.
Mr. Lackleider?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Mayor Keenan?
Yes.
Ms. Janice Zerker?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gerber?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
And on the ordinance.
Ms. Janice Zerker?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Ms. Saleh?
Yes.
Mr. Lackleider?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Mayor Keenan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gerber?
Yes.
And we have resolution 39-14.
Authorizing the city manager to enter into a contribution agreement to compensate the city for a portion of the city's commitments to Jerome Township under an annexation agreement between the city of Dublin, Washington Township and Jerome Township.
I'll introduce it. Thank you. Marcia?
And this is companion legislation from the one that Jennifer just discussed with extending the boundaries and then also the annexation agreement that we passed a couple meetings ago. And this provides for the, the sharing of the 210, $210,000 payment to Jerome Township where the developer Edwards under Tartan Ridge LLC has agreed to reimburse the city for 50% of those, of those costs. And we are asking for adoption this evening.
Very good. I think we're all familiar with this. Any questions? Uh, Ann?
Ms. Janice Zerker?
Yes.
Ms. Saleh?
Yes.
Mr. Lackleider?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Mayor Keenan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gerber?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
And it looks like under other, we have a taller flats project update? Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry, sorry.
I thought I did that already. Go ahead.
I was just going to give a quick introduction and then let the applicant take over. So tonight's request from the developers to present some modified design concept for your review and feedback. Obviously, council reviewed this at a previous work session and had some concerns. So the developer wanted to come before you tonight and give an opportunity to look at their revised submission and help determine how this project may move forward. Staff and the developer met briefly at the beginning of last week just to look at this design concept, but no formal review has been done by staff or by the planning commission. So should they proceed or get some feedback to move forward, they'll need to obviously submit revised plans. It'll go through a formal process. And should a development agreement be something in addition to that, that would be forwarded to council at a separate time as well. And then in addition, the council work session on June the 2nd will be a presentation about the streetscape and where we currently are with that and how that shapes John Shields, which will then potentially have some impacts with how that plays out with their site plan. But that's all I have in terms of introduction, the applicants here to get your feedback and input.
Let me have the floor.
Thank you, members of council.
We have your name and address.
I'm Bill Riott, 19 Sessions Drive, Bexley, Ohio.
Thank you.
But lived in Dublin for about 18 years until, until we moved, about 12 years ago at this point. Many of you know me, many of you don't. I haven't done a lot up here in a long time, but I'm president of Casto Communities, one of the partners of Casto. And we're going to be very brief tonight and try to be as respectful of your time as possible. First of all, for those of you who don't know Casto, we have about 23 million square feet of retail. We do mixed use. We do retail. We do, we currently own about 5,000 and own and manage 5,000 apartments in Columbus and central Ohio. I've done quite a bit of work in Dublin dating clearback from the late 70s. Dunmeere, Asherton, I can remember standing in, I think it was this very room, working on Asherton, which is 509 units right over here. This project, we are very committed to and we're really open to working with Dublin and council and staff. We seem to have had some hiccups, but I just wanted you to know that my involvement's here, but I'm also very concerned that we work very closely to try to figure out how to make this special. The one thing I did want to point out is that when we do these things, we do them to own for the long term, not for fees. We don't flip them. And therefore, we try really, really hard to make it right. So this, this is different. It's difficult. It can be special. I, I'm pretty excited about how John Shields can come through there. We think we have very unique architecture. We put together a really good team. Joe Sullivan and I have partnered on developments for, well, I guess since we went to college way too long ago. So I'm going to turn it over to Aaron, who's going to go through it. And then what we'd like to do is just then open it up mainly for questions and answers and try to get some input and, and see what you think. So Aaron's going to give you a little history. Thanks.
Very good. Please.
Good evening. Aaron Underhill, 8000 Walton Parkway, New Albany, Ohio, here representing Casto. And I'm going to try to talk and show you some slides and multitask here. I'm kind of from the Ben Hale School and I like to use boards, but we're going to go ahead and do this anyway. So I apologize if I screw it up. What we're here to do tonight is to really get a general consensus from council that we're on the right track here and that we've taken the feedback we received at the last meeting before you into consideration, understanding that planning a project here in this area is very complex, taking into account all of the code provisions that apply. We need to work with staff and take into account their comments and obviously go through a planning commission process. Having seen this body last, we wanted to get further input on what we've done to address your concerns based on the economic component of this project. What we heard very clearly when we were here, boiled down to its essence, were three things. Number one, while contemporary architecture is appropriate here for this area, our initial proposal maybe went a little bit too far and we needed to incorporate some traditional elements into this architecture. And we think we've done that, as we'll show you here and as your packets here demonstrate. Secondly, there was a lack of architectural diversity, at least in the, the eyes of the city. And we're, we're making strides to try to address that here as well. And thirdly, the site plan, it was said, needed to really create some, a sense of place and gathering, a gathering area where this, a sense of community could be built. And that's what we're going to, to also speak to here tonight. We spent the last two months really trying to figure out whether we could make this work economically, whether your concerns could be addressed. And I think we've made a real earnest effort here. At a high level, we do have a lot of work to do. There's a lot of details to be worked through, but we wanted to balance the need to, you know, balance the money we've spent to date with not wanting to throw sort of good money after bad, but we want to present you with something that you could react to here tonight and we can get your comments. Look at me. The first of the slides demonstrate a, what we are calling the central green for this project. And this is a view looking westward on John Shields Parkway. And we think this does a good job of showing a perspective of, of a green space area that could be a real gathering place and it could very much complement the greenway along John Shields Parkway. It also gives you a flavor for the variation in the elevations of the buildings, the different colors and materials that we're proposing and some of the treatments on the buildings that I'll speak to here in a minute and then Joe Sullivan will be available to, to speak to in more detail. What we heard very loud and clear the last time was that we, there was a need for a gathering place, as I mentioned. And we had, in our previous plan, some smaller areas that it was felt that people would probably not use in the way they should. And we think right here, we've created something really special. This is, shows the, the, the plan with the clubhouse back behind the green. We've heard some comments from the staff that we, you know, there may be some additional revisions we could make to this plan to make this an even more special place. And we're certainly willing to, to take that into account and we'll continue to work with staff in that regard. What we see this as is an active area where people can congregate, go and, you know, have activities there. We think that this, there's a lot of programming that could be had here in terms of art shows, festivals, maybe a splash park, maybe an opportunity to display some public art. And we'd like to work with the city to make sure that this space is as special as we think it certainly can be. To give you an idea of the size of the space we're talking about, on the left-hand side, we have Columbus Commons and these are all to scale. This, this central green with the clubhouse is slightly smaller, but it is very close in size to Columbus Commons. And on the right-hand side, you see the Dublin Kaufman High School football field, which obviously gives you a further, further evidence of what we're talking about here. It is a big usable space with a lot of opportunity to create something special. Going back to this view here, you'll see in the background there a, the, the community center that we're talking about. And what we're trying to accomplish with this community center is a place where we can have, it'll invite people to come there. I think it'll present some opportunities to do some special things. The inspiration for it is the Barcelona Pavilion. And there's a rendering of it right there, but, but we see this as a gathering place and we have, we're going to try to design this in a manner that actually allows for a flexibility of uses so that we've heard loud and clear that we'd like the opportunity, at least for a mix of uses here at this project. And we think this is one place where we could build this in a way where there could be a coffee shop or an ice cream shop or different opportunities here that the form of the building will allow, allow to happen. As far as the architectural style is concerned, this is where we were before. And what we heard were a few things. Number one, it was a little, a little bit too contemporary. We, there was some concern with how the, the units themselves address the street. And so this is the before picture. What we've got now is what we believe is a project that addresses the street and provides more activity in a manner that, that we've heard loud and clear from the city that, that they'd like to see. Whereas we had the raised planters before on this, you'll see here with these walls on the previous units. What we've done here is we've brought the entrances down to the street level. We've provided multiple entrances in and out of the buildings and hedge treatment here. All of these are very conceptual. And you'll note, along John Shields Parkway, this is meant to show that. You'll notice on the left-hand side, there an art gallery with an artist out front and, and we've designed these units, Joe has, in a manner that will allow for live-work units. So we think that, here again, here's another opportunity for this mixed-use component where we need to build a building with a form that will allow for those things to evolve over time. We have also designed, Joe's designed these buildings so that, we also heard that at, at street corners and intersections, we wanted to create more interest. And we, we think we've done that. If you look in the upper left-hand corner of this slide, you'll see how the window, windows are designed there to wrap the corner. We've done that by moving living space more to the center of the buildings and it's allowed that, that to occur. And we think, you know, all of the intersections here present an opportunity to do something special with the architecture to make it much more interesting. We were also told, this is the third of the three components that we wanted to focus on, that architectural diversity hadn't been achieved before. And so what Joe has done is he has, he has changed, while keeping sort of the programming of the buildings the same, he has tried to introduce some different materials, a lot of brick and a lot of different colors. These slides will show different treatments of the roof lines, providing, you know, not a straight line across. These are flat roofs, but there is some change in the, the height of those buildings here from time to time. And we've heard from staff that what they'd like to see is different areas of this project possibly have their own sort of identity, and we're certainly going to work through that as we move forward with them. But as you can see, just at first glance, these, these designs seem to pop out at you as, as certainly being, while the structure of the building is the same, they certainly look different from an aesthetic point of view with the architecture. Wanted to point out, this is neighborhood launch downtown and this is one thing we heard on a number of occasions from members of council that that was a project that they would like to emulate to some extent. While we had addressed in some detail at the time that the economics of this project are different from that one, we do believe that there's some opportunities to architecturally integrate some similar, some similar components as down there, such as the painted brick here that you see. And, and we, we think that we can, we can certainly get there and create the same sort of feel. So this is just some information on Casto that the bill's already gone over. I think he has mentioned that, that, you know, they want this project to have some long-term viability because they'll be a long-term owner of it. That, that's their plan and that's their business model. In order to do that, they needed to make sure that the programming inside these units really worked for the, the market that they're trying to serve, which are the young professionals and the empty nesters, which is also what the Bridge Street Corridor is trying to serve. In order to do that, we have done a few things. Number one, the unit mix right now, as we've laid it out in this site plan, calls for 65% of the units to be one bedrooms. This will be appealing, of course, to empty nesters and to maybe what we would call older single professionals. Secondly, 60% of the units have attached garages, which we believe, those will provide direct access to the unit, which will certainly be attractive to empty nesters who have come to expect that with how they've lived up to date. And also, these price points, we believe, are, the rents are going to be higher than if you were to rent a home typically in Dublin. So that's going to attract the type of young professional that, that your economy here needs to attract. And we believe that the rents will be in line with what they would be willing to pay. Casto, for its part, is a, it's, it's been around for 87 years. It's developed a lot of project, projects all over the country. Obviously, you know it's located right here in central Ohio. They haven't done a project in Dublin for quite some time, but I know they're very excited to do so here. With that, I appreciate your time and we'd like to open it up to questions. We've got Bill and here and Joe Sullivan to answer anything you might have specific to the project.
Thank you, Mr. Underhill. Appreciate that. Counsel? Anybody want to weigh in? Mr. Lackleider?
First of all, could somebody tell me where these attached garages are? Can you show me? Please.
Joe Sullivan, Sullivan Rec Architects, 309 South 4th Street in Columbus. The, the attached garages are all behind the building and they are accessed from an interior court area of the buildings. The elevations that we're showing are the street-side elevations of these buildings. In the previously developed package, we had garages. We, we didn't go through and exhaustive showing every single view of every building. We were trying to give a flavor of the design direction. We haven't changed the, the main diagram of our, of how units would work. There are a couple different building types in the sense of how, how garages are attached. But, but it's, it's a, it's a case that we have flexibility in how those garages are rented and they are, they are attached to the unit. So you can get from your garage to your unit undercover. They're not, they're not detached. I think you've probably seen a lot of examples of, of rental projects that had garages detached from the project. We purposely didn't do that. We followed very closely the guidelines developed through the Bridge Street Corridor on how to locate parking and attached garages to buildings so that they're away from the public side of the street. Those are, these are details I'd be happy to show you. I don't have plans that are defined as part of this package, but I think those.
I guess what was in our packet was this.
The garages.
I don't know, I don't recall that we had a slide like this.
We did have that slide up here.
You did?
Back up. The garages are actually under the buildings too. So that when he, when they said, when he mentions behind, they're not behind like attached. They're part of the building. You drive under the building and then you go up directly inside.
Probably like crawl.
You don't see the garages. They're in the back.
Crawls laid out very similarly, although I do think they have some detached facilities over there beyond the ones that are incorporated in the building.
Well, that answers one question because when I was looking at this, I was, well, another question I had was, is there on-street parking here? I assume there is, you know, because again, you know, this isn't very detailed, but it didn't look like there was enough surface parking for all the units, to accommodate all the units. So when you talk about garages and, and what you're saying, you know, is an important feature, obviously. You know, at least it is to me. And then the fact that we have on-street parking, you know, helps me understand better.
We do have on-street parking and we're, we're slightly in excess of the required parking for the project. We've worked closely with staff. Actually, the, the, the whole approach to this was to not overpark in the sense of lots more asphalt. I think it's, it's a much more sustainable direction to try and, and marry up the required parking with the real demand. And I think what we're seeing typically is a movement away from the automobile as being the, kind of governing everything of planning and so, I mean, that, that's the direction.
That's all I have for now. Thank you.
Let me mention this. These streets, if you can barely see this laser point, these are, these are like, these are the front streets as you go through. And then there's motor courts in the back. So along these mains, these main streets, just like on John Shields, there's parallel parking. So that would be a traditional city street with parallel parking in the front. Walk-up, parking in the back, and the garage doors are off of a motor court. And there's some additional parking back there as well.
Okay. Who else on council here? Dom?
Bill, do you guys still own Asherton?
We are partners with Wyler and Kelly, who still own Asherton. We, there's, we were just talking about that, that we, we aren't actual owners except we're partners with Wyler and Kelly and we're very close with them. So no, we built that and developed that and then they bought the entire thing a good 20 years ago.
Yeah, I just was compliment on whoever developed it, your firm, and I think it was you. And because at the time, we really didn't, we were residents on having apartments in our, in our neighborhood. And I remember that was a lengthy battle, 14-foot earth mounds. And it turned out to be, I just drove through it the other day and it was a really nice project, still well-maintained with all the lake features and all the architecture.
There's a, very interesting, this rarely happens, zero vacancies at Asherton out of 509 units. And on that point though, you know, this is so different and what you're trying to do with the Bridge Street Corridor, I had to think long and hard. This is, this is a different architecture. This is very different even for Dublin. So we work, I, I'm an architect by trade, but I got into the development, the business. I like to say I went into the dark side, but we, at least that's what some of my friends say. But we work together really closely, Joe and I, but also EMH&amp;T and Linda Minari is our land planner. And we've worked really hard. And some of the things that I know you're trying to accomplish there, I think we can accomplish. It's going to take a lot of effort. It's like this courtyard. I know that isn't exactly what staff would prefer, having that big green out onto John Shields, but we felt that was really important. There are ways to modify it, so our new plan shows it that way. We also think that it's kind of pioneering in that, you know, as you run John Shields through, it's very important to us how John Shields, look, we got to meet with one of your consultants today who showed us a little of the work that's going to happen on John Shields. And we got, you know, helped kind of get it, get us feeling really excited about what can happen. By the same token, you're going to pass some other projects before you get to this one, even up off of Riverside Drive. So it's, it's pioneering up front, but I think it can be special. It's going to take a, a lot of work with us and staff. But what we're trying to do is just find out if we're on track. We are zoned, but we do need your help on making sure this can come together, so.
You know, I think, design-wise, there's some really major improvements. I think you did a good job on, you know, the last time we requested that you turn the buildings, you know, so that they had corners to them. And I think the window treatment is really a nice feature, wrapping that around. I think that's a big improvement. The Barcelona Pavilion, which all of us in architecture school had to try to dissect, that's an interesting concept, you know, I don't know where that's going, but that could be really an interesting feature. And the attached garages, I think, at 60% is excellent because of the way it's done, set underground. And so, you know, all in all, the elements, and I think Mary Lee brought this up last meeting, the elevations of the building and the fact that, that quality exterior look that we're looking for, that you're trying to emulate, and I hope you do in this struggle, we end, we end up with that, that look.
It's going to take, this is, these exteriors are. It's going to take, this is, these exteriors are different even for Dublin, different for us, different for a lot of people, but we don't want to do what a lot of other people have just done. There's certain things you can and can't do here. It's a lot of expensive materials. We've kind of pushed this to the limit. These are going to be very high rents for small units. Should be, I, I think it's something that you'd be proud of. And it's something that we wouldn't be involved with, frankly, if it wasn't something that we could do right. And we've worked with market research people already. We've tested this two or three times. It's a lot of units. It'll set a standard for some of the other things that are coming along, so we have to be really careful with it. And, and John Shields is really important to us, that it goes all the way through, that we're not at the end of a dead end.
Well, another, another thing you guys did on the architecture that I think is really important is, you know, the verticality, the cold verticality of your last buildings. And then blanching the roofs out left and right in certain areas and certain elements really made a big change.
We also have these live-work units. We dropped, we dropped the, where you have on John Shields, many of the units will have like a storefront and you can actually have a small business there, a small office, possibly if somebody had a small kind of a retail use or something, we could put that in there as well. So it will have a very urban feel as much as it can in this location. And that's, that's very different as well. And that can be closed off from the apartment above or rented separately.
You know, that's an important feature too. And I, you know, when Mr. Underhill mentioned that, I wasn't exactly sure. When he said multiple uses, I thought, oh, wait a minute. And we do like that concept of trying to bring in some of these small craft people that might have some kind of small business that's interesting and unique and being able to bring that into our community. And as you know, because you've been to Europe a lot, I know. And, you know, those kind of shops in the lower quadrant.
It's an artist, home office and, you know, put your little shingle out. And, you know, it's kind of hard to do that right. And, and Joe has worked really hard. Actually, we're working on a project in Franklinton downtown that we're talking about the very thing on, on the front streets. How do you get it to interact with the street? And yet, if it's going to be a living unit, how does it feel safe also? Because sometimes that doesn't feel like a great spot to live. So, and we have a way that it's disconnected. You have to look carefully at the floor plans to understand that.
You know, another thing you did that I was happy to see was you cut out the barrier wall. You know, that works as a barrier, whether it's a fence on the entry space. And I've seen this happen down at Marion Village, actually. And by taking that down, you open that up and it's a lot friendlier, the subspace.
There's others like to weigh in, I think, Mary Lee?
I'm, I'm having trouble reconciling this picture with, than the, this. They don't look similar to me.
Yeah, me too.
Well, they are.
Well, that, part of that is the picture shows a three-dimensional character. There are some different scale of buildings. There are, there are some smaller, the elevation that you just pointed up was, I believe, a 12-unit building. There's also an eight-unit building that is made up of components of that. And those are showing, those, they're, they're predominantly eight-unit buildings along John Shields. There are some 12-unit buildings of a similar character along Tuller. And so, we didn't show every single elevation because there are going to be variations and collections. What we were trying to show was a flavor. And we would work closely with staff to, to blend and get the right components in the right locations because we heard loud and clear that you wanted more diversity, not only in the, the kind of architectural character, but, but also in the, the roof lines and the colors and materials and textures. And we tried to come up with something at least could show you a direction. We're heading, it's not a complete, but it, but if we could get some feedback to know whether we're heading the right direction. And I think that the three-dimensional images actually are a much more real representation of what the space will feel like.
Because I'm much more attracted to the make-believe here.
It's a, it's a presentation, it's more of a watercolor and what it is.
Yeah.
But that does show parts of the actual building or the entire courtyard from a little bit of a distance. The elevations I've always maintained are very stark because you, you never see a building that way unless you stand directly in front of it and don't look at anything else. So I, I'm actually sometimes always hesitant to even put elevations in a package. You don't see it that way, the, the perspectives are more of what you see. There's quite a bit of offsets in these buildings. And also this sort of little more contemporary look is something you have to get used to and certainly, definitely have to get used to in Dublin, but it is what the younger people are wanting and it is, it is something that's catching on. We put enough tradition in here to make it lasting, I believe.
Yeah, I, I actually don't have any problem with that. I think that we wanted something different in this area than whatever our traditional definition is. So, you know, what, what we had seen a week or so ago was further west of where you are, you know, I'm expecting there to be a lot of glass and all. So, you know, you don't want some all of a sudden Miami University look, you know, half mile down the road here.
This, we've done a lot of work downtown. We did Flats on Vine. We're currently doing a project in Victorian Village called Aston Place that is getting the highest rents on a rent per square foot of any place downtown. And it, it, those projects are being rented by the exact market that you're pursuing. We, we feel like we have a, a pretty good understanding of that market. There, there are projects that have oversized windows, more windows than you would typically see. I, I wanted to comment to Counselman Reiner's comment about the buildings turning the corner. One of the things that we did is that we went back and changed the garden unit plan so that the living spaces are always on the corner. We actually had a bedroom in the previous plan and so, even though we were trying to put windows, it wasn't a strong statement. By moving the living space to the corners, then we could accentuate those, I think that the buildings, and that's why we did the perspectives, so you could see these three-dimensionally and see what they look like as you come down the street. And, and I, I do feel that the project architecturally is far superior to where it was. And so I guess if, that's a good thing, if you get feedback and if we, if we can respond to that, I hope you agree.
Yeah. I, I totally agree with that and I think that I, I, everybody I know wants light coming in. They don't, you know, they wouldn't want a bedroom there.
Yes.
You know, that's not how people live anymore, really. And then my only other comment really is, I don't have a suggestion, so I hate to say this, but this layout is just boring to me. I'm glad for this great green space that you've added and all, and I'd love it to even be bigger than it is, but it, when I look at not this picture, but that one, it doesn't, it doesn't show interest to me. So I guess the interest comes in the diversity of the buildings, is what you're suggesting.
One of the things that it, it's really hard to convey a concept of this scale in a drawing where you're trying to extrapolate that information. It looks like little toy soldiers all lined up. It's not going to feel that way. I think this project is an opportunity. I, I believe that the Bridge Street Plan that you've put together, where plan, the buildings are to be pulled up to the street, it's urban, there's a significant investment in the quality of the street and, and, you know, granite curbs and, and brick walks and tree lawns and all these things that create an environment. You can't convey that in a drawing. And it's difficult in these early stages, particularly when you get into computer drawings because you can't show everything. So they tend to look more sterile than the space has been. Part of, you know, our experience has been, our buildings always end up so much better in execution than anything we could represent at this stage of a project. And, and we've been doing this for 30 years. We've got several buildings in Dublin, and I think Dublin, as I talked before, are very proud of these buildings. And I think our organization with Casto Organization, we have a history of doing that. And so, I think that the perspective renderings convey an essence of the feel that we're trying to create. We'll work through the details as the project is developed, but I think it will be far richer in execution than what you can perceive at a site plan.
Thank you.
Let me, we have others that would really like to weigh in here, okay? This is really for us to have discussions as well. Amy, please.
Yeah, I just wanted to say, I know you said that Planning Department wasn't wild about the green and I think it's really cool, just because it'll, it'll break up, you know, the, the streetscape and it'll, you know, be, we always talk about having some interesting green spaces. And I'm assuming this is a public park, essentially. So I, I like that aspect. I like the size of it. I think it's fine. I don't think it really detracts from the urban feel. I wonder, I was curious about the materials. It looks like, and again, I know this is a computer drawing, is this an all, are these all brick buildings? Is this, these different colors siding or what's?
There'll be brick and siding. And then some of the brick would be standard brick, some painted brick. We're talking about like hardy plank, we're not talking about a, like a vinyl siding.
Obviously, but I'm, I'm just curious, like, how much, you know, is, is this, for example, this, this gray here, is this-
And, and the gray portion of that would have been siding in that drawing.
Okay.
And then the, the, obviously the balance up with this brick. We, I think we did go to a higher percentage of masonry in this go-around as we, as we looked at the architectural massing.
Okay. I'd just encourage you to, you know, I like the painted brick. We're all about natural materials and, you know, less siding, more brick because we're looking at, you know, when you, I had a chance, I was down in the short north in Victorian Village over the weekend and got a chance to really be there and look and notice things that I hadn't otherwise. And I was in German Village as well another day. And everything down there almost is stone or brick. And, you know, the painted brick is, is something that adds the, the color diversity. So I would just encourage more masonry versus less. And you've answered all my other questions. I guess I'm not sure how the, the garage works. And maybe I need to go to Crawell Village and see if, if you're familiar with that.
They're kind of built into the unit.
It's directly, you see this little motor court? So this would be like a public street.
Right.
With front doors. And then you drive around in the back and it, it is actually a hundred, it's a three-story building.
Yeah.
So the first floor, you would see garage doors in the backside.
Access right to the unit.
Yes.
Yeah.
Well, their access to a common circulation. If they're not attached, you can get to the garage from a common circulation then to get into the unit.
Well, some of the garages would have direct access.
Yes, yes. And the, the one, the townhouse building type, they type their direct access.
Right. Okay. Amy, is that everything?
Um, yeah.
Greg?
Yeah.
I believe it's approximately 390 at this point. And you've men, mentioned rents.
Your own.
The rents are approximately $1,000 to $1,500. You know, if you go by a square foot, you know, it's, which is higher than all the suburban rents here. Dollar a square foot's kind of a dollar, dollar 10. These are more like a dollar 30. And some of the best things downtown are a dollar 60, that's per square foot per month.
So the square footage is just-
We have various square footages. I think there's about 750 is the smallest.
Goes down it?
We've got even some small efficiencies that are probably about 600.
Yeah, about 600.
So 600 to 1,200 square feet.
Thank you.
These also would have finishes like condominiums, the real nice countertops. It's really an upscale community.
What about ceiling heights?
Ceiling heights would be 10, Joe, nine or 10.
Okay.
Probably nine on two and three and, or one and two and 10 on three.
Anything else, Greg?
No, thank you.
Rick?
Yeah, I think most, it's been, but just a few things. How many acres here?
17.
17? Okay. Just on this-
On just this, not the-
That square?
Yes. We may have additional future down here on the Thomas Farm, just this piece.
Hopefully have something else.
I think it's approximately 23 or so to the acre.
Yeah, okay. Now, I think you've made a lot of progress here. I agree with Amy. I'd like to see more diversity of building materials with respect to natural materials, brick, stone, that sort of thing, just for consideration. And I think, I think everything else has been pretty much set, so in the interest of time, I'll, I'll kind of pass. I, I would like to see your demographic studies because I'm not, I'm not completely sold these would be attractive to young professionals. I think it'd be more the empty nester type personally, but-
I think we're actually getting quite a few empty nesters in this product type, but the finishes haven't been good enough in most apartments to attract the empty nesters. I agree with you and I hope so.
Yeah, that's what I suspect. Anyway, I think you're in the right direction and, you know, as far as I'm concerned, go work it out with staff at P&amp;Z.
Tim, you had one more item, Dan?
Yeah, I did. Thank you. You know, I feel like the bad cop here and I apologize, I mean, to a degree. You know, Asherton was, was mentioned and, and I certainly do agree, you know, that the landscaping there, the setback and so forth, you know, is, is outstanding, you know, certainly given its location within our community. The, the, the product, physical structures are really in need of maintenance. I mean, somebody's going to have to invest some money there and I'm talking about big money or it's going to be falling down in 10 years. Now, I, it's, you know, I'm not here to beat up on Asherton.
Yeah, and we don't have any affiliation for 20 years with Asherton, other than we designed it and built it.
I, I understand. And, and, and from a distance, it looks, it looks nice. It really fits in the landscape well. And I understand that's not what we're talking about building here. Thank goodness. You also mentioned the Flats on Vine and, and that, in, in my non-expert opinion, you know, fits well in that location. If, if you were, if you were to tell me that that's what you wanted to build, you know, anywhere in Dublin, I'd say, I'm not interested. And I know you're not. You know, I, we have a very limited memo from, from staff and I think that's because they had very limited information to work with, I mean, in terms of what they conveyed to us. But some of what gives me concern is that, and, and I, and I agree with, based on what little information I feel like I have, is staff with respect to architecture makes the comment, their quote is "some progress." I see other here, with respect to the, the Greenway, the frontage on John Shields has a suburban feel to it. This, this separate clubhouse and pool are other distinctly suburban features. And, and based on what I see, I tend to agree. I, I, I think Mary Lee did as well as, as, as I could, you know, to articulate, you know, how the layout looks somewhat uninteresting. And I, I apologize if I'm not fairly representing what you said. And I, I understand there are limitations, you know, with the, the street grid and so forth. You know, but I, I just want to say, you know, that I have reservations.
Sure.
You know, what I'm hearing here is that, you know, we, we, we're not in a position to provide the detail, you know, that I think, that I know I want. And so, you know, to the extent that you would go forward, you know, I would reserve the right, you know, to say, I don't like it at the next step because I'm not, I'm just not there yet. I don't, I don't have a high level of confidence that, that what will ultimately be presented is what will be satisfactory to me, is, is what will appeal to me. And so, I, I guess, you know, I don't want to mislead you with respect to, and I'm not speaking for anyone else, of course, but I don't want to mislead you with respect to, you know, the fact that, that I'm in love with this project because I'm not-
It's a, and thank you for that. I, I will say this. We have, a lot of what you see here fits the zoning that you have in place, the way the buildings line up, the way the streets go through. And so we're anxious to work with staff further, but a lot of what you're seeing is because of the way it's zoned and the way it's planned and the densities. And I'm, there's not, you know, we've worked really hard. I'm not sure there's a lot of other kind of things. You can agree and disagree on the architecture, but it's what you're doing here. The one thing I did want to point out on this land plan, while it may look a little boring, if you've ever seen site plans of some of the streets you might love, either if it's a Northwest Boulevard or something in Washington DC or Europe, they're very boring, the site plan, because all you see are building lines. As each building goes through a progression, some of the nicest streets in Chicago would have been just like this. So it's a matter of getting everyone to understand what we're trying to do, make sure it's good for us and for Dublin. And, and you know, it's very difficult to get that done. And we just do disagree on certain things, like the green and how that can be done. So, look forward to working with you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. I, I would just echo, I think you're, you're making a lot of progress. You're headed in the right direction. This, this was, to me, very interesting. This was scary. And I know you already have articulated that and don't need to hear that again, but
And I know you already articulated that and don't need to hear that again, but I wanted to give you that, that particular feedback. And I agree with a lot of things that were said here, what Amy brought up, Merrily as well. We did say we'd be brief. I know you've got a lot of extra work to do, so we thank you for your time.
Okay.
Unless there's any other questions. Okay. So we have staff comments, please?
Yeah, a few items. Few items. First, the June second workshop for Bridge Street. We're going to be focusing on the streetscapes and bringing back information to council from our previous discussion, including materials and the finishes. And also a couple of things that have come up is the issue of live streaming. And do we want to do that again for this workshop and for the remaining workshops? When we did it for the Crawford Hoynes, it was because it was such a large project. But I know that, I think that was mentioned at the, the last P and Z meeting, that potential. And we just wanted to check to see what council's thoughts were as far as live streaming the other workshops as well.
What's council's pleasure?
For me, I, I think, I would like to see us do that. I think the more we can educate the public about the details, since it's such a different kind of project, you know, than we've seen historically. And I don't.
I agree with that. I, I still question why we're having a workshop every Monday, but aside, I think streaming makes a lot of sense.
Okay.
Everybody else okay with that? I think it's fine as well.
And the other item to, to discuss, also the issue that's come up, I think it came up at our last workshop and then at P and Z, the, the issue of the, the development review and approval process. And the, the questions about PUD versus Bridge Street. And if council wanted to have that discussion on June second. I know P and Z had asked for some information about the pros and cons of the different processes and if that would be something council would be interested in discussing that evening.
Well, you know, I, I thought the Planning and Zoning Commission was going to vet that issue. And I'd prefer for them to, give them free rein to go ahead and continue that process than bring their recommendations to us.
I guess I, I don't agree with that because it's a huge differential from what we have already approved. And I guess, you know, as, having been the final approval process, approval body of what is in place, I think we should be as, you know, making the decision by our own education and not let them have the intensive education making a recommendation to us. I mean, that's just how I personally feel about it.
Who else? Please?
I, I agree with Mayor Lee's comments.
We can schedule a twenty-minute timeframe on June second to have that discussion and get some feedback from council.
See, that's exactly the, the issue I'm getting to, a twenty-minute discussion. I, I think this will take a little bit longer than twenty minutes.
I, I think that's, actually, that's more important than the landscape and all that. Maybe that needs to be presented in a different way so we have the larger portion of the time.
And that's why I was recommending P and Z and we want council to do it, so that's fine. But I thought P and Z would have, would take more than twenty minutes to do this. If you want us to do it, then I think we need more than twenty minutes.
And we're fine with that? Because we really do think this, this is a completely different philosophical view of how Bridge Street is developing and it's not what we thought council's direction was previously. So we just want to make sure that we don't get out in front of council before P and Z and that council's the one that's giving us the direction on this issue.
It sounds like we should have a broader discussion about this, which we could do at the June second meeting. At least we can air out everybody's views probably a little better than we're going to articulate here tonight. With some additional information, I presume.
Are we going to get, excuse me, are we going to receive a staff report about this, you know, something written? Because I think that was one thing that P and Z really wanted was sort of a, some written documentation, pros and cons. Their issue as well as, you know, PUD versus neighborhood came about when we started talking about the Bridge Park development and rezoning that into a Bridge Street neighborhood. You know, we have a number of Bridge Street neighborhood districts that we rezoned when we did the whole thing and they were sort of balking at the idea of doing a rezoning for Bridge Park and said, you know, well, why don't we do a PUD so we can do, we can, you know, tailor this to what Crawford Hoynes wants to do because otherwise there may be too many waivers and that sort of thing. So, and we haven't even seen the proposal for what the neighborhood, you know, what, what that's going to consist of.
Well, it sounds like it'd be good to have some of that information prior to June second so we can, so we can have that information to be prepared to have a comprehensive discussion.
Yes.
We'll have that information ready and send out ahead of time.
All right. What else?
The other item, we had an item of interest about the old Vince's house and that it was going to be coming down this week. And we've had some issues with utility shut offs and so that's not going to happen this week. And we'll keep the, the neighbors informed and up to date on that. The third item is Emerald Parkway. There was a memo that was in your packet about the landscape mound and the shared use path. And based on discussions that we've had that related to actually the rezoning that was scheduled for, I think it was May first with P and Z and the rezoning of the Holder property on the commercial side. It probably makes some sense to move the bike path connection from where it comes through straight from Grandi Cliffs down to the western edge of Genmar and connects with the master plan location of the bike path connecting the Holder Wright Earthworks Park to Emerald Parkway. And previously, we had the conversation with the residents at the February fifth public hearing and had shown them the cut through on Grandi Cliffs and they had agreed that was what they wanted. And so our, our discussion with them recently had to do with the rezoning, but this was one of the issues that brought up, that they brought up. And once we've reviewed it, it makes some sense. And it could potentially help with, even though we don't believe there'll be a lot of difference in the, the noise from having a mound that's solid versus the mound that has a cut with the bike path, that it could provide some additional barrier that could help with the noise wall issue that is a concern that they've expressed too. So if council has any feedback, we don't need information tonight or your, your thoughts tonight. But we just wanted to give you the heads up that our, our thought at this point in time, it makes some sense to do the connection at the end of Genmar versus Midway and the mound.
Good. I think that would make the residents happy.
Yeah.
Do you need a motion from us or, because I'm fine with that and, you know?
A motion makes it clear, so that would be fine.
Okay.
Well, Mark, before we do it, I just want to make sure, this is something very consistent with, with the conversations we've had and the residents have had here of late, correct?
Yes. And typically, you know, I know it's come up about making changes to projects. And one of the things that I think we do very well and council's always allowed us to do is as we go through projects and changes occur, like this rezoning that came up. If the rezoning hadn't happened and we hadn't had these conversations and we weren't looking at the master plan for the project, we, we probably wouldn't be bringing this back to council. But it really does make some sense for the, the bike pack, the connection that's being made there.
Yeah, Rick and I went out and tracked through the mud with those folks on a number of different occasions and, and I think they will be very happy. I'll make the motion that we adopt the change to the plan.
And I'll, I'll second it. Very good. Any discussion? Dan?
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Mr. Leclerc?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Ms. Salee?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gerber?
Yes.
Mr. Tennessee Zerker?
Yes.
Mayor Keenan?
Yes. So you have direction you need on that?
Yes. Thank you. One final item, I'm going to defer to Steve on the adult family home issue.
Just to keep the public informed where we are, and we will be sending emails to all the people we have contacts for is, our research continues. We have contacted and have secured a expert to assist us with this issue with respect to dispersal. And that person will be coming into town on the twenty-ninth of, of the month. A little bit of delay because of his personal, some things happened personally medically, had to delay a couple of weeks. So, and we will make arrangements so that he'll be working with staff and he'll also be working, taking comments from the, the residents. And we'll get more to come on that when we get his firm schedule when he, when he gets here. But we wanted to say it publicly and then we'll get an email out tomorrow to all those folks that we have their addresses on.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you. That would bring us to committee reports. I don't believe there are any committee reports, anybody? And we'll go to roundtable. Greg?
I just had one question. I've been spending a lot of time out at Dairy Fields with my kids playing baseball and things. And I don't know, Fred, if this would be a question for you or not, but when you come into Dairy Fields, for those of you that aren't, and it's absolutely wonderful park, by the way. And even with all this rain, it drains beautifully and, and the kids are playing out there even though there's all this bad weather. When you come into the park, it's sort of, it's almost like a backwards P shape. You, you come in and you go straight back to the soccer field. And if you loop all the way around, the, the ball field is sort of to your left when you come in. And there are signs that say ball fields and an arrow that way and soccer fields and an arrow ahead. There, it's extremely difficult to see the numbers of the fields because there's so much green between the parking lot and the fields. It's hard to see the back of where the numbers are on the backs of the backstops.
Okay.
And we were out there this past weekend for this whole tournament and a lot of teams coming in from out of town. And people, a couple of teams were just late because they were driving around and they couldn't find their way to the fields. Is there any way, when you come in and you can go either to the ball fields or back to the soccer fields, could we put the numbers of the fields on that sign? And maybe designate the numbers some way where people can see it from the street that they're driving on? Because you can't really see it, again, because all these trees were maintained, you can tell there's ball fields, but you can't tell really what the numbers are. It's kind of confusing. I'm sure it, it, people eventually find their way. Is there any way that we could look and see if we could get additional directional signs to get people to the specific field numbers that they'd be looking for?
Sure. Thanks. Fred's usually concise.
Yeah, we have a game on Tuesday, Fred. If you can get out there, I'd appreciate it. That's all. Thank you.
Good answer, Fred. Thank you. Is that all, Greg? Amy?
I'm thinking I'll combine my P and Z report with my roundtable. The first thing that I wanted to let council know and give a public shout out to one of our most devoted council fans, Avery Stinchfield. He's celebrating his twenty-second birthday today. So Avery, happy birthday. He's supposed to be celebrating with friends and family this evening, but when he tunes in to watch this broadcast, I'm sure he'll be thrilled that we've remembered him. With regard to the P and Z report, I just wanted to talk about the neighborhood rezoning versus a PUD. I'm glad we're going to be discussing that and I'm glad that we're going to be live streaming it. I think it's important that our planning commission, that we acknowledge that they have lives outside of their city responsibilities and that, you know, they're able to go back and view these meetings because it's important information for them to have. But I don't think, you know, they necessarily can come every single Monday that we're here. One concern that was expressed the other night, we were talking about the Bridge Park West project. And the fact that per our code, we have the ARB reviewing that development. And the point that, that some of the commissioners made was that what you need is not only the, you know, the, the right at the site view, but you sort of need a twenty thousand foot level view of site plan review and that sort of thing. And if you think about our responsibilities that the ARB has, it's typically a single building and they're looking at very, very fine detail. And would it be a good idea to somehow involve the planning commission and the site plan reviews? Was, was their suggestion. I know that we wanted to streamline the process for the applicants and put the historical projects with the ARB. And, but their concern is that, you know, they might end up, you know, sort of muddling through. And, and obviously, staff's role will be very, very important. So that was a concern that was raised. I don't know, you know, what the ultimate answer is. But that's a concern and I, I certainly see what they mean in terms of ARB's familiarity. Perhaps, you know, those individuals could ultimately be trained or, but it's, it's, it's very different. What they're going to be charged with going forward is something very different than what they've been charged with to date.
Amy, as you know, I've been bringing this up for several years now, with the form code. And in effect, ARB has veto power. And the one thing that council has done was that, well, if, if the, if the developer does not like the decision of ARB, they can certainly appeal to council and council.
Well, they're an advisory body, correct? And it would, it would, their recommendation would serve as a recommendation. And if it's negative, then it would come to council and we would have the final say, right?
It's at our discretion. I think that's the rule today. So I think it's something we need to look at. It's really dope.
Yeah. So I don't know, staff's thoughts. They're certainly familiar, planning staff, with what ARB is doing. That might be yet another topic to, because these, these projects are going to start coming quickly. And we're going to need to have, you know, whatever reviewing bodies, body or bodies that are going to be doing the review up to speed and ready for the task.
We can have information ready to discuss on June second for that as well, knowing that what they're looking at is different than what, what we would look at or P and Z would look at. But we can provide some additional information on that topic as well.
Sounds like we need to get there.
Yeah. Other thing, planning commission requested, and I think for myself on council, I think it would be helpful as well, more than the six-day typical, you know, you get your documents and then you have your meeting the next week. With these Bridge Street proposals that are very complex and very different, planning commission asked that they have the documents as they sort of come in. And so if you get, so the thought was, as the, the projects evolve, feed the planning commission documents so that they can see sort of the evolution and sort of start thinking about questions, thinking about, you know, what they want to talk about, what they want to ask. Or at least have, if you're going to give them the total packet, need more than six days to review it. So it would involve staff and the applicant maybe, you know, putting a, a, a hearing off a week or two. I don't.
And that probably would make more sense than giving them different versions. I think that could be confusing and they could be addressing issues that have already been addressed. But we can look at the option of timing and giving them a little more time on some of the, the larger projects and if they need to move something back a week. So we can, we can look at that and how that would work.
Yeah. I, I think that would be appreciated on their part to have more time. And, you know, maybe as, as we all get used to these, you know, we could go back to a typical schedule. I had a couple of things that I wanted to ask about. One is the neon and neon-like signs that are appearing everywhere now that we, I guess, we don't enforce that because it's my understanding that we had a business that had a neon-like sign which is prohibited. It got to our magistrate at mayor's court and the magistrate said, this law is written such that I can't, I can't rule on this. There's no way to enforce this because of the way it's written and you need to do a better job defining neon and neon-like. Am I correct in that memory?
Yes.
Okay. Well, now we've got neon signs in a lot of different businesses. They're in the windows. They blink, they flash, they, you know, the, the lights, you know, go around in a circle. And they're, I think, very much not our community's expectation. So would it be possible to get some code written that would satisfy a magistrate so that we could enforce our requirement that neon and neon-like signs are prohibited?
Yes. And what happened was, I heard about this last week or whenever the question came up somewhere, maybe it was at P and Z.
It was at P and Z.
Okay. And I ran down our prosecutor today, first time I'd seen him. He remembered a case and I do remember it because I talked to our magistrate about it afterwards. And honestly, we just didn't redraft anything, but we are already working on it. So we will have something for you.
Okay. I think that would be
Thank you.
great. And then the temporary real estate signs that are up in front of pretty much every office building in our community where I think a company, a real estate company that has space for rent in a particular office building asked for a permit to put up a sign. I think they reapply every six months or something. Well, some of those signs have been out, up for years and years and years. And I don't know, you know, is there space in that building? I don't know. Do we go and ask them to pull this, you know, when they're at, when they're completely full, do we ask them to pull the sign? Do we ever, you know, say, hey, you really ought to, you know, change that up or get rid of it? Because some of them really look bad. And then there's properties that have multiple signs, you know, one facing this road and one facing the other. And it really takes away from the beauty of our office parks. And we've got these gorgeous buildings with beautiful landscaping and then these, you know, really ugly, really large signs. And I think they are as much advertisement for the real estate company and any office in central Ohio that they might have space in versus that particular building.
Yeah. And we do enforcement on those and there is a permitting process that they follow. And we've even had complaints from those people that have to get their renewal for their signs. But we do enforce that. So we can provide you with an update as what our process is and what we, what we. our process is and what we, what we check and look for each year.
Okay. And I, I don't know, you know, what the pleasure of council is, but I'd certainly be interested in reviewing that just because we've got a lot of those signs. And if you, you know, are paying attention to them, you'll notice even more. And, you know, some of them are...
Can they plug those GP, those, those permits into our GPS and show us an overview?
Oh, I'll have to see what, what we have, whether...
It's just a thought. Then you can see where they're at and how many there are and how prolific it is.
But we have information like on the number of signs that we have and where they're located. So we can look at that and see what makes sense from a mapping standpoint.
Well, and how long they've been there. Because I, I know of one, my gosh, my kids were in elementary school and that sign went up. And it's still there. And I got kids in, my kids are in college now. So it's a long time. And, let's see, we've got the dispersal. And that's all I have. So, thank you.
Thank you. Merrily?
You had a memo in here from Fred on the Kramer's Crossing Village Condominium Association with a recommendation by staff not to provide the relief that was being, being requested. And did you need a vote on that today? Or how are we handling this?
Actually, we had originally scheduled that for discussion under other. And we had a phone call from representatives from...
Yeah, I saw that, that they weren't going to be here. But...
Yeah. And so we felt that instead of us having the discussion this evening and then probably having to have it again when they're available and want to come in and, and talk to council, that we would just defer until they're able to, to come in and, and meet with us.
I, I think, for me, that's fine. For me, though, they're one of many, 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 many places in our town that have this issue. And they don't come and ask the city to take it over and to pay for it. And these fees are not unreasonable for what the responsibilities are. And so, you know, I think we need to, we need to take into consideration that it sets a precedent. And if we move forward and, you know, treat them differently than everybody else in this community.
I think that was staff's recommendation. And what we were trying to do is give them their day in court.
And we get, and we get more phone calls and requests for this than what you see. Typically, once we tell them that we are recommending denial, they, in a lot of cases, don't pursue it.
Right.
They wanted to pursue it, well, we have already approved it.
Something previously. And so I'm sure they think that this time, they'd have the same result. Where other people, we haven't approved, you know...
You're talking about for that particular group?
Yeah.
Well, and, but there were, there were other issues with that. The, the cost was really outside the norm, as I understand.
Well, and what was approved was the issue of the chemicals and the cons.
The chemicals and the cons.
And it was because they were connected, where they had previously also asked that we pick up other maintenance costs. And we didn't do that at the time. So, yeah, we agree. Our recommendation is, is not to approve the, the request. And it will be back before council. I mean, it'll, it's helpful. We can let them know that if, if there is a direction or a comment to relate to council, that's helpful as well.
Well, I can speak for myself. I, I agree with staff's recommendation. So, but I still think they have the opportunity, should have the opportunity to say their piece. And that's why it was pulled off the agenda. So. Okay. Anything else? Tim?
Yes, thank you. On May 8th, I attended the police memorial service. Vice Mayor Gerber, of course, was there and offered remarks on behalf of city council. But a nicely done service, as it always is. And, you know, one that I'm, that I'm proud that as a city that we do this. And, you know, certainly the police department, you know, does a nice job. You know, and, you know, it's attended by, you know, there was just a, there was a residency next to me that, you know, she said she came last year. I asked if she had any particular affiliation with the police department. She said no. And just wanted to recognize our police department and so forth. So I'm glad we do that. May 16th, I guess that was last Friday, attended the Nationwide Children's Hospital Benefit Concert. I know many of you have attended that in the past as well. What I thought was interesting was I had the opportunity to meet the band. You know, that, that opportunity wasn't, you know, unique to me. But the, the lead singer or whatever, you know, seemed genuinely interested and asked questions about the City of Dublin. And then during the course of the performance, mentioned the City of Dublin, called out City of Dublin in a positive way, you know, no less than seven times. So Dan Sullivan came over to me and said our sponsorship was going to cost us more next year as a result. Anyway, it was good for this year. And then finally, attended the Miracle League Community Awareness Day on Saturday. But unfortunately, I was there at 9:45 in the morning and...
Got some hail, didn't you?
They were complaining when I arrived that they wished it was 10 degrees warmer. And I said, gosh, at least it's not raining. And then 10 minutes later, it started to rain and hail. And it canceled the game. So anyway, but what, what I did want to pass along is that they're very appreciative of council support, very appreciative of our staff that manages the Miracle Field and so forth. And there is a storage garage which was added to the south of the existing shelter. And, you know, they said that's been a godsend. You know, they showed me the old little storage closet, you know, that, that was the only space available to, to store a lot of their stuff and, and, you know, what a benefit this garage was. So they wanted me to pass along to council how grateful they are, you know, for council's continued support and, and also the good work that Fred and, and the rest of staff does. So that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Tim. John?
Just want to compliment the Dublin Rec Center on staying up to speed on their equipment. Seems like the pieces of equipment that are most in use or in demand, they have, I don't know how they did it, but they went out and got stair climbers and things that people were looking for. And so I just want to compliment them for taking care of business. Something else someone asked me about, the, there's no real connection from the Dublin Arts Center vis a vis walker bicycle from Emerald Parkway. So it's, it's probably be a very small connect. But we haven't really put that in and done anything with it. So just want to look at that and see if we can get people either by bicycle or by foot access the Dublin Arts Center. And then again, I just want to say that again, it's positive chief to see that crime is diminishing across the board on thefts, vehicles and burglaries here in Dublin. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Rick?
Very quickly, just to let all of you know, the administrative committee will meet this Wednesday at 6 to, for interviews for the personnel board review. And then we will have some on the June 2nd, that Monday before our workshop. So everybody's invited and we'll get that done. Also, on June 24th, we'll have our charter issue and review. That's set. Everybody on council's welcome for that. And at your desk, it looks like we've had a Planning and Zoning Commission member resign. So we'll have to tackle that issue as well. And, excuse me, last Wednesday, we had a board and commission awards and recognition dinner. And I thought it was a fantastic event. The Dublin Singers were there. And they were, they were absolutely fantastic. And Merrily was there and Tim. Very enjoyable. And, and again, Ann, thank you for coordinating this. I think it's been a very nice event. Well received. And thanks so much. That's all.
Very good. Well, I'm glad we got the summer break coming up with all these extra meetings. So it looks like we're going to, in any event, I have nothing to add. We'll stand adjourned.